On Tuesday, October seventh, please stand for the pledge of allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, roll call. Ward one, Ms. Campbell's here. Ward two, Mr. Richardson's here. Ward three, Ms. LaFontaine's here. Ward four, Mr. Clark is here. Lisa Blanchard, City Clerk, is on vacation. Julie Burt filling in for as Deputy City Clerk tonight. The mayor and our city attorney is is out of town. All right, mayor's comments. Item A, motion to accept the agenda as is.
I move.
Ward three moves second.
Ward two seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four? Yes. Motion carries four zero. A couple of things I wanted to mention. Want to give an update on the peer. We have finalized the scope of work in the bid documents. The bid documents have gone to MEMA and have been approved by MEMA. So next week they'll start advertising. I can't remember how long they have to advertise. I know it's at least two weeks. It might be longer. Once, so we'll get, we advertise it for bids. Once we get the bids in, we'll go through the bids and we'll, you know, look at the bids and decide which one we want to move forward with. It's not always the lowest, it's the lowest and the best. And then we'll turn that information over to FEMA, as we know. Everybody's on a little vacation right now, so hopefully they go back to work. By the beginning of November, or middle of November, we should be, have the the bids and hopefully we can get those approved by FEMA. Then we have to get the money obligated. So things are moving. They're moving in the right direction. I mean, two years we've been working on this. And, you know, the first bids that we got in were October twenty-three, and now we're in October twenty-five. We've been fighting it for two years, but I think we're on the right track now, and we just got to get FEMA to play ball with us. Congressman Ezel's office has helped. So once those documents, once the bid, the lowest bid is decided upon, then we can submit it up to Congressman Ezel to help us move it along through Congress and FEMA. Okay, any questions? All right, the other thing I wanted to do is just publicly thank Bobby and Melissa Richardson for all the hard work they've been putting in to make cruising. I know it's going to be a success tomorrow. I don't, you know, even if we get a drizzle, we're going to party through it. And they've worked really hard, and I'd like to give them a round of applause. All right, moving on. Item number five, alderman's comments. Ms. Campbell.
Uh, the only thing I have is, didn't get this in in time to put it on the agenda. The twenty twenty-five Disaster Leadership Conference is November eleventh through fourteenth. I want to, I would like, it's at the Beau Rivage. I'd like to attend the twelfth and thirteenth, just those two days. So it would be registration in just that one night because it's got, they've got stuff laid into the, into the evening on the agenda for that conference.
Is there for DM or mileage or anything additional, cost?
Um, I wouldn't. I, I mean, just whatever the standard, I don't know.
Okay, all right.
I'll move.
Okay, ward three moves?
I'll second.
Ward two seconds. Discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Is that it, hon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, ward two, Mr. Richardson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the, the nice words, but as I always say, without the support of the mayor and the board and the city employees that are doing a lot of work out there for us, it, it just wouldn't go on. But I thank everybody that's helping out.
All right, you're welcome. All right, ward three, Ms. LaFontaine.
Yeah, mayor, the only other thing that I had was, somebody asked me, do we do any kind of like welcome to wave when, when new residents move in? I've kind of thought about it a little bit. Probably about the only place that you would have access to give, and, and for example, you know, they said that their neighbor moved in, didn't know who, you know, their mayor, uh, you know, who the mayor was, who the alderman in that area was, you know, what type of businesses, things like that. Is there something that we could put together, like a welcome, I don't want to say a packet, but something?
Just general information.
General information, and, you know, like, you know, American Legion, you know, things like that that we have here. That, and to me, about the only place that you could probably catch them whenever they're moving in would be at the water department. You know, whenever somebody comes in and pays for a tap fee or?
Right.
Because you couldn't really do it at the building department because you got people remodeling and different things, but, you know, if we could put together some kind of
Okay.
little packets or something to hand out, I thought, I thought it was a pretty good idea to do that.
It is a good idea. All right, we'll look into it.
That was all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ward four, Mr. Clark.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, public comments. Got a couple of public comments tonight. First is Mr. Michael Rakowski. Talking about zoning number four.
About what? What was that again, mayor?
It's number four under plan, uh, planning and zoning. Please state your name again for the record and wherever your current address is.
My name is Michael Rakowski. My current address is one oh nine Valentine Street, Bay St. Louis. I, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to discuss my request for variance for one thirty South Beach Boulevard here in Waveland between Hart Sea and Angel Lane. In August of this year, I applied for a variance. The city, and, and in my understanding, the city code is a ten-foot variance from the sides of the property. I call it north is towards Bay St. Louis and south is towards Silver Slipper. So a ten-foot variance from either property line. I requested that I get a four-foot variance so that I could build within six feet within the north and south property line. The north towards Bay St. Louis is Judith. It is a vacant lot, has an elevation of thirteen feet. I actually wrote personal letters to all six neighbors that showed what my house would look like, what my lot size was. And then at the end, I gave them a letter with a self-adjusted stamped envelope with a place where they could check I support it, I don't support it, and comment. And I told them in the letter that said, I would submit these to the planning department or to the council, whichever way somebody voted. So it was their choice. I have one adjacent property owner behind me, Henry, is a vacant lot. He approved, sent me a letter. The original is in, I think, the council file. Behind Henry, again, towards, towards railroad tracks, is his brother, that is also an adjacent property of mine. That's Dawn. Him and his wife sent me approval and said that they approved the variance. And then Judith, who is a vacant lot to the north of me towards Bay St. Louis, also submitted a letter and said that it was okay to build within the six-foot variance. I had three other neighbors that I also submitted letters, and one, and it's a public record, verbally said in the planning commission meeting that they approved, had some questions about some apparent flooding that had happened on Angel Lane due to me putting some dirt, some fill dirt on my property, which I'll describe. And I had two other neighbors, and one objected and one didn't answer.
Mr. Rakowski, can we limit public comments to three minutes? You got like forty seconds, so.
So what I'm asking is, I've notified everybody. I'm asking for a four-foot variance. Sorry, sir, I didn't, wasn't aware of the three minutes mark.
I should have told you at the beginning.
Okay, that's quite all right. I have some neighbor who's agree with me, and I would just like to know if the ten-foot variance could be adjusted to six foot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we also have Ms. Althea Boudreaux who wants to speak on the same variance request.
I'm Althea Boudreaux. I own the property that's across the street at one thirty-two South Beach Boulevard. I sent emails to all of you guys. You would have received them. I'm not going to read them. But I would like to summarize why I'm opposed to this variance. The four-foot variance request puts the side of the building six foot from the street edge because the edge of the lot abuts the blacktop. How many other houses exist sixty from a street in this area? The only example I could come up with is the one that's on St. Joseph, and that is actually in a CO zone. It's commercial. It's not a velocity zone. It's got subsurface drainage and there's a sidewalk in between. The ten-foot side setbacks were just updated to replace the twelve point five foot on the lots that were smaller than fifty foot. Lots larger than that have a fifteen-foot side setback. Three foot of fill has already been added to the property, even though it's in a velocity zone. The four-foot variance would put the roof line five feet from the street. Three foot of fill, fill high by five or six foot creates a forty-five foot degree angle for watershed. Angel Lane becomes the ditch where the water will have to drain. The lot is forty-two foot wide, and a house design could be achieved in a smaller footprint. The lot is deep. A pool house that also has filled under it is already existing on the property, and it's been discussed that a pool is being considered. Will that also be allowed to be three foot higher than the street? No discussion happened at the P and Z meeting regarding requirements for swales or drainage plans. One step has already been approved, the fill. Now our variance for a thirty-foot wide home is being requested. I'm requesting that this bill needs, build needs to be considered as a whole project and how it will affect the other six property owners on the street. I'm asking for this variance to be denied. I've been in Waveland since I was three. It's been sixty-eight years that I've been a property owner, multiple properties, and a resident. And that's why I'm bringing this to y'all's attention. I feel like planning and zoning should have looked at this in more detail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Boudreaux.
Can I give this to you for a minute, to be, put in a minute? Is that okay? Is that allowed? Yes, you may.
Yeah, you can, you can put it in. Mr. Rakowski.
Uh, may I make one comment, please?
Come on up.
Althea's correct. Fill dirt was brought in. I got a permit for bringing fill dirt in. All of the requirements that were set upon doing that. I was required to hire a survey engineer for a no-impact letter. I got a permit for thirty-six inches of fill dirt and a no-impact letter from Levee. I put sixteen, I would like to just clarify, there is only sixteen inches of dirt that was put in.
All right.
And my lot is eleven feet high. Also, Angel Lane is justified towards Bay St. Louis, towards the north. And that's why the asphalt is on my property line rather than being centered between the property to the south, which is towards Silver Slipper and my property. So there's, the asphalt's there, so that's how it turns out. That's all.
All right, thank you very much. All right, item number seven, board business. Item A, motion to approve the depository docked claims paid and unpaid dated October seventh, twenty twenty-five in the amount of six hundred sixty-eight thousand thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents.
I'll move.
Second.
Ward four moves. Ward one seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item B, motion to approve the operating utilities docked claims paid and unpaid dated October seventh, twenty twenty-five in the amount of three hundred and seven thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventeen cents.
Move.
Ward one moves. Ward two seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item C, motion to approve and authorize the following regarding banking and accounting as recommended by Comptroller Robert Petita, number one through nine.
I'll move.
Ward four moves.
Second.
Ward, one second?
Yeah.
All right, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item D, motion to approve and select Morial Construction LLC as the lowest and best quote in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred dollars for Lakewood Drive Stormwater Pond Improvement Project as recommended by Brent Fringe, PE, and approved by Brown, Mitchell, and Alexander Consulting Engineers.
I'll move.
Second.
Ward three moves. Ward two seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Mayor, real quick?
Yes, sir.
One small thing on the, on the, on C. You said one through seven. I think it's actually one through nine.
No, I said one through nine.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
My apologies. All right, I'm not here.
Item E, motion to ratify and approve the Mayor Trepani's signature on authorized regulatory agent letter with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Mobile District and MDM, MDMR authorizing Patrick Mooney, professional geologist with BMA Engineers to act on the mayor's behalf for all regulatory compliance matters as they relate to the Lakewood Avenue stormwater detention bond.
I'll move.
Ward four moves.
I'll second.
Ward three seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item F, motion to approve and adopt the Hancock County Tax Assessor's Municipal Final Assessment Schedule that's finalized for fiscal year twenty twenty-five for the city of Waver.
Move.
Ward one move.
Second.
Ward two seconds. Discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four? Yes, motion carries four zero. Item G, motion to approve the municipal compliance questionnaire for the period ten one twenty-four to nine thirty twenty-five. Move? Two moves? One seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item H, motion to spread out the minutes, the list of unmarked police vehicles as of nine thirty twenty-five as follows. I, units one through eight.
I'll move.
Ward three moves.
I'll second.
Ward four seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item I, motion to ratify proclamation of existence of a local emergency in the city of Waver at three twenty-two Gulfside Drive on nine twenty-five twenty-five at approximately six P M. A lightning strike hit the transform of the well, burned the control panel, causing every well citywide to run continually. Water pressure decreased twenty-six to twenty-six P S high, leaving many citizens across the city with very low water pressure.
I'll move.
One second. Ward four seconds. Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item J, motion to ratify and approve the Gomez Phase Two project funding request for fiscal year twenty-six in the amount of five million dollars related to the Coleman Avenue Storm Risk Reduction Project located at the beachfront intersection of Coleman Avenue and Beach Boulevard.
Move.
Ward one moves.
Second.
Ward two seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got some. Um, this is the, the project that they're talking about doing out at the end of Coleman?
Yes. This is just applying for money.
Does this commit us to that project?
No.
That's the question ahead.
No.
So at, so at any point, we can say?
Yes.
Before we get too deep into it and all that?
Yeah.
What's, what's the deadline for us to determine? Can you find that out for us and let us know at the next meeting or?
Deadline for determining?
To determine whether we want to move forward or no.
Keith, would you know?
And do, and if we were awarded this, can we reallocate?
I don't think you can reallocate Gomez. It's not like Tyland. Tyland is easy to reallocate. I think, I'm not positive, but I think Gomez gets written into the law.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
Yeah, I don't think you can. But this is just apply. Okay? Any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item K, motion to advertise for requests for engineering services related to the Kill Delil natural gas improvements project along six oh three. This is restored funds.
I'll move.
Ward four moves.
Second.
Ward one seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item L, motion to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on the following AT&T renewal contracts, not, number one and two. These are thirty-six month contracts.
I'll move.
Ward four moves. Ward two seconds. Any discussion? I did look into going with Coast Connect or somebody else to try to give us another alternative, and Coast Connect could get it to us for the police department, the fire department. They want a hundred thousand dollars to get it to City Hall. So we didn't go that way. All right, let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item M, motion to approve and authorize Kenichi Engineering Surveyor to advertise the construction bids regarding the Garfield Land Memorial Pier Repair Project.
Move.
Second.
Ward one moves. Ward two seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Planning and zoning, item one, motion to accept the minutes of the planning and zoning commission's meetings that dated August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five and September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five is approved by planning and zoning at their meetings on nine fifteen twenty-five and nine twenty-two twenty-five respectively.
I'll move.
Ward four moves.
I'll second.
Ward two seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item two, the planning and zoning commission considered an application request of two protected tree removals for property located at two oh nine Highway ninety, Apostle one three seven M dash two dash thirty-five dash zero one nine dot triple zero. Owned by Chuck Jung. It was recommended and approved by the planning and zoning commission.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Ward one moves. Ward two seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item three was tabled, so we go to item four. The planning and zoning commission considered an application request for a four-foot side yard setback variance submitted by Michael Rakowski for property located at one thirty South Beach Boulevard, Apostle one six one M dash zero dash eleven dash zero four four dot triple zero owned by Michael Rakowski. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval.
I'll move.
Ward one moves. Ward two seconds. Any discussion?
I only have one question. Chris? Have all requirements been met that have been set forth with regard to engineering and all drainage and all those, all that?
At this time?
That you require?
At this time, yes, ma'am, the requirements have been met. The, the grading plan has not been fulfilled, but that will come at a, a conclusion of the construction. We'll have the grading plan fulfilled and the drainage as it is proposed.
Um, so the other question I have is, is the road encroaching? I mean, he said it's right up on his property line. Is the road encroaching on him?
It's awfully close. Awfully close.
Okay, and so we don't have a right-of-way, a cleared right-of-way, obviously, through, through that?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, I think during this term, we went back and asphalted that, and we had to, I think we adjusted it a little bit, the asphalt because of drainage or utilities on this side?
Toward the west?
Right, yes. If I remember correctly, I thought we adjusted that road over, and it would impede on his property a little more than it should have.
It's, it's awfully, awfully close on his property, the property line and the edge of the asphalt there.
I wish Bo was here because Bo would remember.
Did you see Duke Levy's, um, survey?
Yes, sir. What's it showing?
It's showing, it's, it's showing right, right, just right there, right there on it. So we do have an ordinance that you can't flood at your neighbors.
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Rakowski will have to have a drainage plan before he can build. Mr. Rakowski has submitted a drainage plan to us, and I actually wrote over there this afternoon about, about four thirty, just to put my eyeballs back on it. I think he's going to be fine with the crown of Angel Lane, the, the way that the road itself crowns. And then once it gets to the west side of Angel Lane, onto the adjacent property, it actually rises probably a foot to a foot and a half. So either way, if any water comes off Mr. Rakowski's and is able to cross the crown of Angel Lane, it will not go any further than the west edge of Angel Lane before it hits south toward the Gulf.
And just looking, it states it's going to be six foot from the, we'd like to have six foot from the property line, but it looks like where the fill is, I don't know if it's kind of washed over a little bit, but it looks like it's closer to the road now.
The, the fill is a little closer to the road just to get a little more of a, of a buildable area, but the house itself will stop no closer than the six foot.
Well, under norm, under normal circumstances, as y'all know, I'm always very wary about doing variances on side yards. But it's very specific that the ordinance says that it can't be a want, it has to be a need, and this is definitely the definition of a need.
Why, can I ask why you said that's a need?
Yeah, because the lot's only forty-two feet wide, and so if he's going to be able to build any kind of house, have any kind of side yard at all, he's going to have to have a little bit of a that, that's a really narrow lot.
Yeah. Chris, can you explain to me what the process is for bringing in fill before you set pilings in the VE zone? Because I always, it's my understanding that you can't bring in fill until pilings are set in a VE zone, but I've seen that quite a lot on the beach lately.
It's my understanding, uh, through some of the classes that I've been through, through the FEMA, that you can bring in up to two feet of fill in the VE zone without having to get a letter of adverse impact from an engineering firm.
After pilings are set, though, correct?
No, sir, it's, it's, it would be prior to. Any, at any, at any point, you can bring in up to two feet of fill. The, uh, the difficulty in bringing in fill after pilot, pilings are set is exponential, having to work around the actual pilings.
Oh, I know, I get it. But yeah, that's what we were told. You couldn't set pilings, I mean, pilings had to be set in undisturbed earth.
That is not, I'm not familiar with that, to be honest with you. My understanding's from all the, the classes that I've been to, say that you can bring in your fill, then drive your pilings. Obviously, they have to go so far down into the undisturbed earth.
Okay.
To get the fill out of the way, uh, the fill component out of the way, and then you drive your pilings in that.
See, I always thought a little different on that. See, I always thought a little different on that, um, you know, the two-foot thing. I always thought in the, the V E zone that you could only bring enough fill in to grade your property, not necessarily to elevate it.
Well, it, it can't be structural fill. The, the fill cannot be there to support your house or your pilings or whatever, it can be, so essentially, if you're just trying to level out the property, then that's non-structural fill, so that is permitted by FEMA. Up to, up to two feet before you have to start looking at some, some, uh, no adverse impact type situations with your neighboring properties.
Mayor? Can I say something?
No.
My property dead ends, right? Where this is gonna be, this is the first I've known about it.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, you ready to vote? Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two.
Yes.
Ward three.
Yes.
Ward four.
No.
All right, uh, variance request passes three to one. All right, item number five, the planning and zoning commission considered an application request for zoning change from R one to C three for, by Gas and Pace for property located at one seven zero four Chesapeake Street, also one three eight Q dash zero dash thirty-four dash zero zero six dot triple zero, owned by Gas and Pace, which was recommend, it was recommended for approval by planning and zoning. I'll move. Ward two moves.
I'll second it.
Ward three, seconds, discussion?
We voted over a year ago to change the zoning from R one to C three in that whole block, not just behind him. It was the whole block.
Yeah, I don't know why this, I don't know why this came.
So, why is this just, this, this isn't?
I don't know why it came back up.
Yeah, I thought we did this already.
Because, because they never did it, they never followed through with the, with zoning change.
They being?
The, the...
Building department?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this, this is not sufficient. This isn't what we all agreed on and voted on.
Okay. So, you wanna table this or you, to look further into it?
I, I honestly, I think that we need to, um, we're, I don't think we need to table it, I think that what we need to do is just, um, specify that we go back and get this done for what we voted on and approved a year ago. I mean, there's no sense in holding it up, they just need to include the whole area that was approved.
Okay. All right, so there's no motion needed tonight?
I would go ahead and, I would like to just go ahead and vote it again, just in case.
Okay.
Something happens and paperwork got lost somewheres, I mean, if he's already waited a year, I'd rather go ahead and have it on record to go ahead and do it again.
All right, no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Pro, um, item, what was that, five? Uh, passes four zero. There's nobody at property consent agenda, motion to approve the following consent agenda items as numbered A through H.
Move.
Ward one moves.
Second.
Ward two seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero, there's no need for executive session tonight?
I gotta, I got one thing I'd like to see about adding to the agenda though, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The, um, they're starting to fill up pretty fast outside with vendors and different things. And, uh, I wanna see if, get with the chief and see if, with everybody else. I know we had talked about what time we'd block off the road, I wasn't exactly sure when, but since most of the businesses, uh, I say most, everybody on the streets already closed,